This is a meeting of the Scanneless Board of Education. We were in executive session and now let's move on to returning to regular session.
So, second.
Okay, moved by Amanda, seconded by Dana. All in favor of returning to regular session, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, we're back in regular session. Mr. Evans, will you please leave the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Alright, for four minutes, we have everyone present. Seven of seven board members present.
No care.
She had time enough.
Okay, so seven chairs, which is about half hour. And we are now at the student members' presentation, Odyssey with Martin.
Welcome, Mr. Martin. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, my fellow board of education. John Lawrence here, Principal of State Street. Thanks for having us here today. Before we get to our Odyssey my presentation, which should be fantastic, I just want to say to all of our teachers, thank you for all you do. On Teacher Appreciation Day, our staff here, City Council, all of us administrators, we thank you and know there's a lot of parents in the community that also teaches on the districts. Thank you for what you do on set, appreciation week. So, thank you so much for all of your hard work and time to benefit our students sincerely. And now, if all of our students come over. If you could just say your name and your grade real fast and then hang tight for a second, and Wolfert says, I think so, and the voters too.
My name is Dr. Katie, I'm in third grade. I'm in second grade.
My name is Ari, I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Jackson, I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Mo, I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Jackson, I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Ryan, I'm in fifth grade.
Oh, hi, Scott.
Did you know her?
My name is Ryan, I'm in fifth grade.
Thank you, kids. And before, Mrs. Wolfert, our Odyssey my director, coordinator, coach, head coach, toxic. They do a tremendous job, our coaches, our students, for sure. They have such creative ways of solving really complicated, novel problems. We're super proud to have them here at State Street and Middle School. They do a wonderful job, they work really hard, and they should be very proud of all of the accomplishments. So, Mrs. Wolfert, go ahead.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I am a Wolfert, 19th grade, over at State Street, but I also have the pleasure of being the coordinator for Odyssey in my program. And Skynet in Schools has been involved with Odyssey in Region 11 for over 40 years. So, we have a really long history with it, and I'm really proud to be the person running it now. Couple of years ago, I took over the program from Kelly and Quiggin, and my first year running it, we got on the way to the state competition, and it was shut down because of COVID. And last year, we did run the program. And then, this year, it was just really awesome to get the kids back in person, working on teams, and working on solutions, and then being able to have the tournament in person. We worked all year. We have to have it in virtual, and being able to have it in person was just fantastic. So, what is Odyssey? For those of you who don't know, it's open to any child, third grade through health grade. This year, we have 67 participants who range from third grade to seventh grade, and I have 17 volunteer coaches. Without the volunteer coaches and parents, this program could not run. It's a collaborative problem-solving, creative problem-solving program where kids are given a problem and they have to work in a team of up to seven kids. And it's all kid in mind, and adults are there just to kind of be facilitators. And the kids have to come up with the skits, they have to come up with the ideas, they have to come up with their costumes, they have to come up with their scenery, they do all the work. So, it's really fantastic to see their creativity and their struggles sometimes along the way to coaches will tell you, there's times when it's like, I don't know if we're going to get there. And I say, no, believe, have faith, but this is still, they'll get there. You know, eventually, right? You guys do, you know, whole new experience. Yeah, they go, I do this all day. So, it is fantastic. This year, we had 10 teams, for those 67 kids, 10 teams, and eight of our teams were able to move on to the state competition, which was held at Fairgrounds this year. So, that's pretty fantastic. I would have loved to have had all of our teams come today and talk to you, but in the interest of time, I asked the two teams that placed fourth at the state tournament to come and share a little about their experiences with you. And while they were disappointed that they were not in the top three and they got to move on to the large competition in Iowa, they should be really proud of the fact that, you know, after not having any experiments early in the last couple of years, that they made it to fourth in the state. So, I'm really proud of them for that. And before I turn it over to them, I just really want to thank the administration and the school board for supporting this great program, and especially give a shout out to the Estonia staff at State Street that puts up with all of our teams there and leans up after us with smiles on their faces for us. So, we really appreciate that. But I'd love to have my coaches come on, which I have Christina and Kim and Dian and Mike, and the kids come on too. And have to share a little bit about your thoughts of the problem I think for all of these kids, it was their first year doing this program.
Mrs. Wolfert, so we had a couple of entries.
Yes.
I'm James Brooks, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Dobby Wolizki, and I'm in third grade.
I am Nico Labranque, and I am in third grade.
So, there's two different teams that are here, and one team was a vehicle team, and they had to actually create a vehicle and do different tasks, and I'll kind of let him and Christina and those kids tell you about that first. So, that's what I'm trying to repeat, we have the last kids, you want to tell them or just want to talk about your experiences?
We have four vehicles. One, it was a rubber band powered car, which is where we, when we roll it back, the rubber band like rattles up, and then when we let the rubber band pulls on a little stick that pulls the wheel back, so it causes the wheels to move forward. One was an electric motor, which was connected to a gear that caused another gear to spin, which was connected to the axle, which caused the wheels to spin. One went down a ramp. And one was a two-wheeled car that had, that was rubber band powered, and it had this sort of weight that the rubber band, that it went up, and then when the rubber band pushed it, that cut out, it caused the wheels to move forward in that direction.
And just to back up a little bit, Suja Chi, just to back up a little bit, the problem was that they had to create one or more vehicles, create two propulsion systems, and have and be released from an escape room. They had to create characters and a skit and all of this, and they had to escape from an escape room, and the cars had to give the characters the clues to escape. So, there were a lot of moving parts, and they all worked really well together to solve this problem. And they were creative and just, it was amazing to watch. I mean, Kim and I were able to kind of stand back, ask questions, and kind of give that guidance, but we couldn't actually do anything, so.
And we couldn't suggest anything.
And we couldn't suggest anything, so.
The kids had to like drill or cut with a saw, we had to do it first and then explain how to be careful, and then we had to just let them do it, which is crazy, but.
How many weeks did you guys work on a project before you got to do your first presentation?
So, we did it from October, and the competition was in March.
And what were some of the tasks that your vehicle had to do?
The task one was going through a tunnel, and then it knocked a sort of leather that caused a fake like chocolate Valentine's heart to fall, and that was made out of Legos. One, it had to, it had to pull a present. One was it had to, one was it had to.
We could ask your team too.
I'm the team president.
Who's a couple of weeks ago now.
I have more years.
Well, I think you guys do this awesome, and I know it's super hard, so. I'm amazed that like they figure out what it means to have a propulsion system. You know, when they read this problem and, you know, like the coaches and I said, you know, we'll research it, what do you think? Tell us some ideas, and you know, and Googles their friend, and you know, it's just amazing to me that they, what they come up with, that, you know, the different systems that they come up with, so. I have no idea what you mean, but it sounds true. It sounds like you guys are super smart, because magnets and rubber bands and cars with the chocolate candy Lego heart, it sounds like you put a lot of work into it, and you must be super smart to figure out how to make that happen.
The task are going through a tunnel and knocking and triggering something. Another task is picking up some keys, and another one is pulling.
And the last one was going in a circle.
Yeah, the last one was beautiful.
They had to go in circles.
Well, congratulations.
So, for your presentation that you did at that tournament, did you have to create costumes, or did you wear a team t-shirts? What did you wear specifically?
We wore, oh, James left me that.
Like, like James wore like a bunny suit.
Oh.
And Nico wore like a magician suit, or the magician outfit. I just used a shirt that I painted, was like all the people from the play, like.
With Noah?
Keep it, the bunny games, the turkey.
Yeah. First was all different holiday things. Catherine, and then we had Aria.
Um, Aria as the little girl.
Yeah.
And the, as I said.
Wow. And then my other team that's over there, was a structure team. So, it's a structure team, and they have, they have also a little. So, guys, tell me, tell us about what you did, what you had to do with your.
We had to build a structure that weighed under 18 grams, and it had the whole weight.
What was the most weight that you structured and pulled?
Um, in state, well, in regionals, it held 45, I think, and then in states, it held 161 pounds.
Isn't that amazing? So, that's the structure you made?
Um, this is the one that we made, but it weighed too much, so we had to go in on a little bit lighter.
How many did you end up building? Like, how many structures did you have?
We built three inside structures, and the inside structures give you five points for every structure, I think. They have to stay completely inside the structure that it's in, and it has to come apart into two pieces.
Over the course of the four, five months, how many structures do you think you built?
How many test structures?
Five, maybe?
A bunch. We have weight sensors in a fishing board, and they would test them, and they'd be like, oh, they didn't hold anything, and they could kind of analyze how, where to craft and where, you know, where they could make it stronger the next time.
How many times did you get so frustrated, you said, I'm not doing this again, I'm not making another structure? And then you came back and made it?
No, we didn't have any of those.
I don't know about that.
Close to a team that never got frustrated. Dance, do you want to answer, John?
That was a pretty good answer.
Can we see your structure?
Uh, yeah, so.
Can we sit up close, we want to check.
Just checking up. We didn't break all of the part, the second part, this, so our idea was to have a key that you would twist and take out, and it would come apart into two pieces. We sort of nudged around the matryoshka, maybe, or back to where it comes with. It's like a doll that comes apart.
Like the Russians, they're. Oh, oh. Every year, the structure problem is a little twist to it, and this year had to be like one structure nested inside another, and the more structures they put in it, the more points they got.
Um, this is the key, so you twist it, sort of put this one out, and just pull it out, and take the other one out, and then keep going. You had, the inside structures had to be identical to the outside one, and then inside of the very, on the very, on the smallest one, there had to be a tiny character inside of that you would reveal, and that tiny character had to be somebody in the plot of your story.
And you picked your transporter.
Is that a huge product?
Yeah.
And they did their whole skit after, and modeled after the transporter.
Little by little.
That's awesome. Wow, well, congratulations to you guys. Awesome. Maya, you want to tell us about what your team did? Your team, her team did a technical problem, which was a little different, and they had a really special ingredient in there, so remember, let's tell everybody what the special ingredient had to be somewhere in their skit. Kind of look around this spot.
Was baking soda. So, we made like the volcano experiment, experiment with baking soda and vinegar. So, we had to have a hero and two animals. Our two animals were bandages and a baseball. And the base of the story was in Australia, and we had a vehicle that basically had a whole set, the, like, something to destroy the story.
So, her team had to kind of put it all together, and had to have baking soda somewhere in the, in which I think is a unique item that they had perhaps, so, well done.
The thing that we had to bake soda was when there was like this ground destroyer bug master. And we had to show the regeneration of the problem, so we used the baking soda and vinegar for the regeneration and some paper plates. And we had a school and a bug base. It's very cool.
This sounds like a six-what, what's it?
I have to say, one of my favorite things about Odyssey here in Skynet is that we allow any student to join the program, and not every school district does that. Some school districts have it only as a gifted and talented program, or use it as, you know, little tryouts, because they can only have one team. We're lucky enough that they started here, that we, you know, we're able to have 10 teams or more each year, and so that's, that's fantastic. And I asked Ryan the other day in the hallway, I'm like, Ryan, do you miss Odyssey? And he's like, oh, I'm really busy right now, so I go, not really. And he goes, but I'm really excited about next year. And I was like, that's what I was looking for. So, thank you to all of the teams for coming out tonight, and, and I said, like, there was lots of more teams that would have loved to have been here tonight, but I'm just a little smidgen of what our Odyssey world is like.
I just want to say thank you to all the teachers, the parent college teachers, and our awesome kids. The amount of time that people dedicate to this is amazing, whether it's weekends, it's travel, and I see the dads nod their head, and the other, they're just nodding their heads back there. You sort of don't know what you're getting into when you get into this thing. To see this many hours of focused, student-driven work is really a remarkable thing, and it's pure creativity, so I love this program, I would watch them do it, and I hope you do it for many more years.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Wolfert. Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, guys. Thanks, kids, for your job.
It's the highlight of my very moment, to just say.
Alright, we're going to continue on with the board meeting, that was great to have our kids here tonight, and always look forward to that. We're still forwarding to the, uh, the table. So, we're now with the first office meeting for public comment. Read the ground rules here for public comment. The board refers to public expression. At board meeting speakers make comment on matters related to any agenda item, the board won't permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the superintendent during their regular business hours. All speakers are conduct themselves in a civil manner. Personal texts, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Total allocated time allotted for public comment is 30 minutes, with the option to extend that hold. There's three to five minutes allotted per speaker. We offer a comment period beginning of regular meetings and a second period at the end, but generally, we don't receive comments at special meetings. We do ask speakers to identify themselves by name, your address, or your intention. So, with that context, is there anyone that would like to speak to the board tonight? Please.
I'm Greg Erickson, can you address?
Yeah.
West of this bit street in Skynet. This is related to the statements from candidates that were anticipated later on tonight. I had an item that I wanted to raise in advance of that, and statistically, I will also apologize in advance, I did not plan on coming here tonight. So, I need to duck out in about 20 minutes, and probably watch my kids, and if I leave in the middle of the statements, I'm reflection. Anyone who's speaking, I have a high level of respect for everyone in this board, and everybody who's putting the campaign together, because I know how much all of that is and how kind of listen it can be to, to me on the school board. In any event, the item that I wanted to raise related to tonight's statements is related to the late Supreme Court opinion that is likely to overturn the standard established by Roe v. Wade, that will very likely take effect in June if the current opinion is adhered to. What is the significance of that to this board's work? That significance is that there, once that opinion takes effect, there are trigger laws in over 20 states across the country, states where graduates of these schools are likely to attend college and start their lives. These trigger laws will outlaw abortion in some states, in all cases, no exceptions at all. In other states, it will impose severe, severe restrictions on abortion, which will create a very large cultural adjustment for anyone coming from New York, where such restrictions are unlikely to happen in going to a state with these severe restrictions. One of the exceptions that may not be in place in some of these states with severe restrictions involves complications, complicated pregnancies, situations where a mother's at risk. Makes it imperative that our students are prepared to deal with that and to engage in responsible family planning after they graduate from these schools, if they end up in a state where abortion rights are less prevalent than they are in New York. So, that in mind, the relative, the more direct relevance to this board is that I would request from the board candidates that they take a clear and unequivocal position in light of this late decision as to whether or not they can affirm or not affirm their support for the current health and sex ed curriculum that's in place in schools, if not an expansion of that same program. I believe that the parents of the district, which I will be in the fall and for the next 20 or so years, are entitled to a clear and unequivocal understanding of where candidates are with respect to their willingness to prepare the graduates of these schools for lives in other states. Thank you.
Are there further matters of the public that would like to address at their time? There will be an opportunity again at the end of the meeting for people to address their, so we'll continue on that with the agenda. This now brings us to the introduction of board candidates. The board is very happy to, to have all of the board member candidates be able to speak to the public tonight. And thank you very much for being here. And I believe the speakers are going to be in the same order as if they had exactly what we heard about. So, without further delay, then, the first speaker will be Jeff Goldberg.
Should I give my name and address? Nope, no, alright, that is, alright. Jeff Goldberg. Good evening. Writing for school board is not something to be taken lightly. It is one of the most challenging and important volunteer positions you can find. There was oversight of the budget and superintendent. The school board is ultimately responsible for the success or failure of the schools. This translates to the happiness and well-being of our children in the present, as well as the education and opportunities that will have available to them in the future. Due to the eloquent design of our republic, this great responsibility is not without bounds. Instead, it is a mechanism by which the people can correct the schools and allow their voices to be heard. The school board works for the residents of this community. It is the community's responsibility to select school board members and provide feedback to them. I believe it is the candidate's responsibility to clearly let the voters know who they are and what they believe in, so that the voters can make an informed decision, even if this means losing some votes. I will attempt to use this speech to help with this endeavor. Transparency is about honest communication and making information accessible and easy to find. I see several opportunities to increase our transparency. To start with, the school board needs to answer questions asked at school board meetings. Our school board works for the residents of this community. Imagine if an employee refused to answer any questions their manager asked them. Would you consider this acceptable? Easy, technical questions should be answered right after the pre-meeting comments. For items that require additional time to research or whose response may vary based on a school board member, we can add a comment section to the board education webpage that allows each school board member to write their response to the questions at a later, later time. We need to improve the clarity of the items being voted on during the meeting. Frequently, at the end of the school board meeting, the school board will group items A through E together and unanimously prove them with little or no discussion. Often, this is the only decision the school board needs to make during the meeting, yet this process typically takes less than five minutes out of a two-hour meeting. With possible, each item should be discussed with sufficient detail at the preceding board education meeting in order to give the community time to provide their feedback. The school board should then vote on each item individually. We also need better time management of the meetings. Not only are the school board meetings about discussing the items being voted on, but it is also an opportunity for the school board to provide valuable feedback to the superintendent. If something is working well, we need to communicate that to the superintendent so that they can utilize that success in other areas. If something is not working well, we need to bring that to light so it can be fixed. A transparency concern I am seeing throughout the school district is its sensitivity to criticism. I realize it does not feel good to hear criticism, and so it may be inaccurate or unreasonable. However, well put out criticism is extremely valuable, if we can accurately define the problem, we're only a few steps away from having a solution. We should not act defensively to criticism, but view it as a potential opportunity to improve the quality of education. I'd rather have the school board talk about all the problems we have in the school district so we can fix them, over falsely thinking everything's fine. The school board has a responsibility to protect the rights of parents, students, and teachers. This means respecting the medical choices parents make with their children and the medical decisions made by the teachers and staff members. This means that conversations between a student and a counselor can be private, however, as soon as an item of discussion is no longer private, the first people being informed are the parents. This means that the material covered in class needs to be age-appropriate, and any material of an adult nature or involving sensitive subject matter should have the approval of the parents. It means working with the parents of students with special, that needs special accommodations to develop the best plan for their child. It means understanding that the families are the deciding factor in education and care of their children. One of the reasons we selected Skynet was because of its small-town values. When my oldest daughter Kelly started kindergarten at Waterman 11 years ago, she felt comfortable at the school, enjoyed going and learned a lot. As parents, we also felt it. School district was part of the community and encouraged to get involved in school activities. We need to restore this small-town feel to our school district. We can start by encouraging. We can start by encouraging the Laker values of leadership, accountability, kindness, effort, and respect. These guys provide a good photo contact for everyone at all grade levels. We can also allow teachers to have additional flexibility in the classroom, which can improve the excitement level for the students and the effectiveness of the teachers. Yes, there needs to be structure and the students need to demonstrate their ability to be certain milestones. However, teachers need to have the freedom to use their creativity in order to most effectively teach the students the best of their abilities, which often involves different approaches for each student. We need to let the students form their own opinions. Politics and social issues should be discussed, but in a neutral fashion so that the students can form their own opinions. We should avoid CRT or other programs designed to persuade the students to think a certain way. Both the parents and students should feel a sense of ownership. Parents should know what material is being covered in class and should participate in some of their activities such as field trips and school events. Students and parents should be respected as individuals and feel personally involved in the learning process. We can also improve how we measure teacher performance. For instance, one method we use is teacher observation. An observer watches a teacher during their class and goes through a checklist of different items and provides feedback to the teacher. In addition to this, why not also talk with the students and parents? This will provide a clearer overall picture and if multiple individuals are noticing a method or technique that is very effective, this can be shared with other teachers. Or if there's a consistent issue, this can be communicated to the teacher to help them improve. Analysis of test results of this student should also be part of the process because it provides quantitative data. We need to listen to the feedback from teachers and faculty and involve them in the improvement process of the schools. This will provide huge benefits since they are directly being affected by decisions being made. We can also listen to the students. For example, some items students have talked to me about are: being happy that the school restored the cafeteria seating, requesting that the schools turn back on the water curtains, pointing out that the pencil sharpeners in the classrooms have most likely never been replaced in our belt. The nice thing about these requests is they often involve little to no cost, so they can be implemented much more quickly. By involving the parents, students, teachers, faculty, and support organizations such as the PTC, we can quickly address concerns and opportunities to create a atmosphere of continuous improvement where the quality of the school district gets better every year. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak in my idea to know. I didn't have time to cover every topic, there's so many out there. So if you have any questions or you just want to talk to me about the school district, feel free to talk to me in person or contact me via email or text or phone. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, and again about that board, is Danielle Hockenstein.
Okay. As Tom said, my name is Danielle Hockenstein. I'm obviously a current Board member. I have a seventh and eighth grade child in the district and I'm originally from Boston, but moved back here twenty years ago with my husband. He is originally from Skinny Atlas. Three years ago, when I ran for my first term on the Board, many people asked me why I would sign up for this. To be honest, I didn't have some amazing answer. I didn't have a special agenda. I didn't have a pet project. I just knew that I wanted to help and I wanted to be a reasonable voice for our district. That was the case then. That is certainly the case now. And that's why I'm running for a second term. Being on the School Board is not glamorous. There's no financial gain. There's a lot of weeknights where we miss our home kids' events, we miss birthdays, games, et cetera. But the pay comes in other forms. It comes from seeing all those Upstate Mind Kids that were here. It comes from seeing a school play. It comes from having a mom come up to you in the grocery store and tell you about her kid who had trouble in school and someone at the school, whether it was a counselor or a teacher, connected with them and helped them. That, that is the pay. That is why I do this. That is why I want to do this again. I want to be here to help all of our students succeed academically, as a person, and as they try to find their place in this world that they are going to move on to once they leave our district. It is apparent now more than ever that we need a reasonable voice for our community. Schools where many children make their first friends, they learn how to interact with peers, they learn how to push themselves, they discover what their interests are and what things really excite them. They also come here sometimes seeking help and guidance and figuring out their place in the world and what they might need some help with. We are fortunate to have a district that is on solid financial footing. This is not by accident. This is the result of smart and careful resource planning, continued community support, and appropriate uses of our funds and reserves. The financial position allows us to offer our students so much more in terms of academic, extracurricular, and social emotional support. Whether it's the academics or mental health, I believe it's critical that as a Board we constantly ask ourselves, are we doing the best we can today? And what about tomorrow? And what about after that? What is the next thing that our students are going to need? Are we ready to handle it? And if not, what do we need to do and what do we need to put in place so that we are prepared when that day comes? As a Board, a district, and a community, we need to be looking ahead and setting up our students for their next steps. We need to work towards helping all of our students be the best version of themselves and achieve their personal best. We need to teach our children that taking care of one another, advocating for those that can't speak up, and taking care of ourselves, them taking care of themselves, is really important. We need to give students the foundational skills to navigate the world beyond this little bubble that we all live in and love and the confidence in the skills that they've developed here, the confidence in knowing it's okay to say that they are not okay, and knowing that failing forward is not failure at all. Skinny Atlas has always been known as an amazing place to receive an education. From our early intervention math and reading, our wide range of AP offerings, the addition of mental health, we are putting in all these systems in place where ensure our students both academic and social emotional success and needs are met. I don't think our work here is done. I actually hope that it is never done. I hope that we can constantly look at ourselves and ask if we as a Board and we as a community are doing all that we can for all of our students. If you look at the implementation of a middle school reading support specialist or the new mental health position, those are just two examples of the things that we're doing, but we need to keep doing those. Beyond academic support for both our high achievers and our students who may be struggling, we can't forget about everyone else. There is an entire group of students in the middle of both of those groups. It is important that we make sure that all of our students' needs are being met. Are all of our students achieving their personal best? Are we doing the work here, us, staff, community, to make sure that every student feels like they are being supported by us? Are we doing the work to support all students post-graduation plans, whether it's college or a chosen career path? This is an ongoing conversation that I think we continue to have going into the future because I want to make sure that every student in our district succeeds when they leave our Board. None of this happens overnight. One person can't create this change alone. But if elected for my second term, I'll work hard to push our administration and our staff and the Board towards these goals because our community, our district, and most of all, all the students deserve it. If you've listened to any of the past Board meetings, you know that I talk a lot. I ask a lot of questions. I promise if I'm sitting here in the next go-round, I will continue to do the same. I will always ask why. I will ask if we need to do more. I will ask if we are considering every student in this district. I will keep speaking up for every student regardless of their interests, their extracurriculars, their grades, their financial status. None of that matters. Every student in this district deserves a voice. I hope that as a community, we can look ahead and realize we have a common goal and that is the success of all of our students and that we can find ways to work together towards that goal. With that, I ask for your support on May seventeenth because I promise to continue to be a reasonable voice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary Hamble.
Good evening, everyone. Like I said, Drew, I'm Gary Hamble. I just spent, I was fortunate to have spent six months on the Board and had a good exposure to the inner workings of it. And I've still been several boards prior to that. You know, the typical question that we all face with all the candidates that are running would be, what are your three top priorities? What are the things you think are, you know, the building issues you want to be dealing with? I've got three of them. I've got seventeen of them. I've got several of them. But, and I can tell you, governance being one because as a Board, our responsibility we have, we've got to do policy. Policy drives the district. We have to hold, you know, our superintendent and ourselves accountable. All right? We have, you know, mental health, of course. We have to make sure that we, for me, that's also one of my priorities. And we have to make sure that we're fiscal responsible. Those are the three things. We've got flooded with a lot of funds recently, but it's going to go away and we have to make sure despite how fortunate we have out of our district and resource disposal, we have to ensure that we manage that space funds for the best possible outcome. Okay? So it's that I have seventeen though, right? When it goes to the three, what I am mostly interested in from being on the Board is that, is that you understand how a Board works. Understand that I may have three priorities and each of the other Board members have their priorities. But the Board operates as a body politic. It operates where you need to have four out of seven votes. So what is of, tantamount importance is that we have the ability to work together. Sometimes we have to, you know, subjugate our individual needs at a particular point in time to make sure we address the great and good at that point in time that we have in discussion. So my interest, I've been, I've been exposed to a lot of discussions for the time I've been on the Board and I think for the voting public, what's important is that, is that you examine how the candidates operate. Because hot topics are going to be a moving target. We don't know what's going to happen six months from now. We don't know what the challenges are going to be. All right? We don't know where we're going to be, but what we have to be assured of is that the positions you have on the Board that has governance, has fiscal responsibility, has the management and maintenance of the district, you're going to be, I think we have to be assured that we can express our opinions and we will do the right thing collectively because that's how the Boards operate. And that is my interest and that's where, I think my personality and how I do business, it's an easy one. I think we, negotiation, everything involves negotiation, but not subjugation of your values. There's a difference. And I propose, you know, should I be elected since I was selected last go-round? I'd like to continue the beautiful work that we've been doing. We've got four positions and I would appreciate everyone's vote and examination of the character and style of the persons that they're putting in those seats for the next three years, varying timelines. Examine those, examine those aspects of the candidates and project what we need as a forward-looking solution. That's not, well, too much, you know, we celebrate the successes, celebrate all the good stuff we've done, but we're going to be looking forward, going to be looking ahead. We had here, I was still in Mind Kids. Remember, we're modeling, right? We're modeling behavior. And guess what? They had problems. They had issues they had to work through. There are times where they had to give up. They had to prioritize. Different folks had to pretty much step back and say, okay, let's go with what you're doing this go-round and then we can ease ourselves through it, right? Play our modeling for us. So we have to ensure that we go ahead and we lead the district and we provide the resources and we have the right composition so that we can handle anything that comes. All right? So in closing, I think I'm pushing up on three and a half minutes. I appeal for the voters to consider me, consider what I bring to the table and hopefully I can serve a good three-year term coming up. Thank you.
Our fourth speaker tonight is Tanya Coleman.
You guys can use the left arm on me? I'm sorry. Sorry, very much. Oh. Can you take this? Because I have a tendency to talk with my hands, so I need one hand free. So good evening, welcome. Thank you to all the Board members that are here and community members. If anybody's showed up that is not part of the vibe of us. Thank you for being at tonight's meeting. My name is Tanya Coleman. If you do not know who I am, that was my husband Matthew. We have two children in the school district, a junior and a freshman. Lily and Samuel. We moved to the school district about nine years ago. Matthew and I are both pharmacists. He works at Upstate Hospital. And I previously worked at the Kennedy Drugs in Mississauga Village for approximately fifteen years, which at least hopefully some of you recognize me from. It was a long fifteen years. And hopefully a good fifteen years. Wonderful for me, hopefully wonderful for you. While working at Kennedy's, there was a collaboration that became available to teach the third graders about poison prevention. And I immediately volunteered to do so and did so for three years trying. We also collaborated as a team with the community to raise money for the Children's Miracle Network and we did that for four years trying. My unique schedule allowed me to actually volunteer within each of my children's classrooms, all the way from kindergarten through the eighth grade, which I can say was an amazing experience and I was glad that I was able to do that. Now I'm helping to volunteer with Girls on the Run and I am volunteering at both, or local libraries, to read for our kids, trying to teach the children that there's another way to read and that there is a lot of ways to live, to learn, and to be. I was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease in 2015, which cost me my vision in 2020. Because of everything I've been through, I do think as a community we could be having some different types of motivational speeches in our schools. We do want to encourage our children that they can be anything that they want to be. But it's also important to teach them that every single job is important and that college may not be for everybody. Please don't throw the march at me. Miss Village is so beautiful. There's an illusion of perfectionism around it. I would have used the word bubble, but Danielle already used it. But not everybody that lives in Miss Village is perfect. And I feel like we need to be teaching our grown children a more honest outlook, outlook like it's going to look like after school. And we need to try to teach them some skills and the mindset on how to hit any curveball that might come back, come at them, that, and what is hopefully a positive outcome. So not just motivational speeches per se, but some honest ones about life in general. Potentially some budget and financial workshops can maybe be also thrown in there. Just go with that side note. I also believe that having a drug education program that is more expansive is advantageous in the times that we live in. We need to remember that not every family might have a second vehicle and/or the time to give their children five hundred hours. Quick fundraising note. I actually thought that the freshmen's cookie fund, text, text cookie fundraising was an amazing idea, but I cannot possibly be the only person in Skinny Atlas who has people, family members scattered around the United States. If there had been a second link for people to donate money to the class without buying the cookies for their moms or the whatevers. People don't always want the cookies. We potentially could have raised even more funds for that class. So that's just food for thought and a future fundraiser. I am fully aware that the School Board is only controlled in as much as our county, governor, state, and federal government give us those freedoms and or those funds. When I approached about running, my friends had a lot of ideas. Why do we have so many sports teams, especially at the JV and younger level? Why are we not letting our homeschool children participate in sports teams and/or any of our extracurricular activities when we are allowing them to go to the volleyball games? And a lot of what I've heard is why are we putting so much pressure and stress on our juniors and seniors? I could go on now. But I will say to the room what I said to them. What I, excuse me, I'm sorry. The School Board has an agenda that may not include my personal agenda. The School Board's job is to make the right decision for the children, our children, our community, and our children within the guidelines and limitations of the area. I believe it is my job to tell the room that I have the confidence to make our decisions to help the Board of Education incorporate the consensus, needs, and priorities of this school district and turn those ideas and construct policies. I am genuinely looking forward to becoming a more active member of this community, so I would love your support and your role on May seventeenth. I would love your support and your role on May seventeenth. This is where I'm going to apologize to the board, which I think is over here now, um, because Matthew and I have to cut and run after Tim's speech. I have an appointment in Baltimore tomorrow that we were unable to cancel, so we need to start driving. Um, but I have been listening to the last six, nine months worth of school board speeches that I could listen to online, trying to get a mechanism for what your agenda or meetings go feel like, look like, hear sound like, um, what the budget breakdown sounds like, which actually I think that is the most important meeting I listened to, nor people should listen to that one. And most importantly, getting a feel for your voices. Um, I think I have a good idea of your lineup, but I'm not positive, so don't test me. Um, so I do wanna apologize, I will listen to the board meeting when we come back. Um, this is where I would just like to thank everyone for listening to me. I hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening and wish everyone safety. Thank you.
And our final speaker handed tonight is Tim Caverro.
Thank you, Tom. I am Tim Caverro. I have worn many hats in my life, son, student, teacher, coach, husband, dad, school administrator and grandpa. I'm hoping to add one more, school board member. With seven of my non-grandchildren residing in the Skinni Atlas School District, I continue to have a big interest in the Skinni Atlas School District, where I spent the last twenty years of my career in education. After five years as an assistant high school principal and athletic director, I spent fifteen years as a middle school principal here. Due to an unexpected life change from my wife's passing, I found more time in my day. I have a need to do something positive and wanna get back to the Skinni Atlas community that supported me for my twenty years here. Serving on the school board makes sense to me. Since announcing that we're on, many people have asked what's your agenda, what's your platform? The interesting thing is, I don't have one. I feel I'm a neutral person who's here to listen to students, teachers, staff, parents, community members to facilitate and collaborate. I'm here for all students, not a select group. I'm here as an ally for advocate and for all parents, not a particular self-centered. In addition, I'm here to ensure that we are representing the taxpayers and being fiscally responsible. Agenda to me sounds like a political word and my philosophy has always been that politics does not have a place within a classroom or a school district. As a community, we need to work together as a collective unit, not as individuals or factions. I believe that having an agenda would defeat the purpose of being on a school board and that all students must have a fair and equal opportunity for an education. Being a school board member means representing the entire community. After twenty years in Skinni Atlas, I feel I know the community well. Over time, the edge, it takes a village to raise a child. Once embedded right in our letterhead and newsletter banners, it's begun to take a backseat. We need to get back to that, working as one collectively, doing what is best for kids. I've identified three areas of focus that I believe are foundational to all we do. For the best learning to take place, we must provide a safe environment, strong academics and life-enhancing exercise. One, a safe environment. Students are not ready to learn unless they feel safe in their environment. So many things can affect our students, from the school bus, the hallways, to the social media. Teachers do their best to pick up when something is wrong. We must continue to work to mitigate physical, verbal or emotional threats and to identify when students are faced with mental health issues, depression, anxiety or life changes that impact their ability to learn. Two, strong academics. Skinni Atlas is one of the top-ranked school districts in the country. The work of a board and administration to provide the best possible education never stops. It's a constant challenge to provide our quality teachers with all they need to help our students perform. We must continue to evaluate and evolve to ensure we are providing opportunities for all students to learn. It's important we continue to teach what we feel is important to the students in this community. We know our students best and what's best for our own kids. Three, extracurricular enrichments. Athletic and artistic opportunities for students of all ages are important to run out their experiences at school. These extras develop and enhance lifelong skills, team building, respect, communication, creativity, memory recall, abstract raising, sense of community and expression. Again, doing all these things and I need to be accomplished while being conscious of being fiscally responsible to, to the people in the community. So many of you have passed along positive words to me in support. I ask you to turn your words into action and turn up and vote on May seventeenth. If you have a conflict, you can request an absentee ballot as outlined in the short notice report. If you feel what I have said logically, you think the school district should be going, vote for me on the last name on the ballot. Thank you for listening.
I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the board for all the speakers tonight. I believe I expressed last year after hearing everyone speak that my only wish was that we had, in tonight's case, five seats open. Unfortunately, we only have four seats open, but I do thank you all for speaking and for your willingness to be candidates for the school board. And if we can continue on now with the meeting, uh, we are now at item F on the agenda under procedural items. And that is approval of the minutes from the April nineteenth meeting. And also I'd like to group that with the approval of the minutes from the April twenty-seventh.
Awesome.
Removed by Daniel, seconded by Amanda. Any discussion, any correction on the minutes? Then all the table approving the minutes for those two meetings, please say aye. Any opposed? At least that we do approve those minutes. Mr. Knut, the floor is now yours for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Lyndon. I just wanted to start by also echoing my thanks to all of the board candidates that came out tonight to speak. Um, you know, this is a critical component of an educational system and the level of participation in our community is always so impressive. And, uh, you know, the results of all of that trickle down onto our kids. So sincere thanks to all of the volunteers in the community who are willing to step up in board service. It's truly remarkable. Um, also wanted to say a big thank you to all of the people that work with our students this week and teacher appreciation week, uh, just the remarkable feats that were accomplished over the last two years, uh, and their focus on relationships and connections at Skinni Atlas, uh, and all of the positive effects that it has on learning, uh, are just truly remarkable. Just to highlight a few from this week, uh, we were named, uh, once again, uh, Mr. Santori might be able to help me out, I don't know how many times in a row, but once again, outstanding communities for music and the arts. Um, and then most notably, uh, over the past week, a statistic came our way that each and every one of our athletic teams, if you remember how excited I was in fall, that all of our fall sports were granted academic honors. Here we are, uh, all the way at the end of the year in the spring and each and every one of our varsity teams received academic honors, which is, uh, unheard of, so just unbelievable. Uh, just to show the focus on student athlete is still in that board. And one of the other things that I just wanna highlight is a lot of times in conversations it sounds divisive between music and the arts and sports. One of the unique things of living in the bubble, one of the unique things of a small community is when we're talking about music and the arts and sports and plays and concerts and, you know, football and lacrosse and softball, they're all the same kids. We were fortunate enough to go to the Music Guild presentation last week and you'll watch your athletes playing an instrument, singing in a choir, performing in a play. Uh, and that is such a special and unique thing to Skinni Atlas, so I just would be remiss if I didn't highlight that. Uh, the rest of my superintendent's report today was really, hopefully continuing the conversation, not, not even until the end, Amanda, of UPK. So the board put it to us last time to do some research and crunch some numbers and gather some information and data. And I wanted to thank, um, Joanna Schelling and Pat Brown and Jan Whipple especially for their work in, uh, digging in. Uh, this got kicked over to Connor for the dollars and cents as well, for any additional things. So during the week, uh, I had shared with the board a document that they generated that pretty much presented a worst possible case scenario for cost. Uh, and that cost a total of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With our UPK allocations, uh, once again, just to clarify for the community, whereas we have about a quarter of a million dollars of funding allocated for UPK in the district, that is not a check that the district receives that we get to spend at our, our will. It is allocated fifty-four hundred dollars per student. So looking at our resources and looking at our space, uh, we did identify a space at Waterman Elementary. We identified all of the curricular and furniture and, and costs associated with those positions. And at fifty-four hundred dollars a student, the appropriate student size that we came back with was approximately fourteen. So fourteen or fewer students by lottery, we could start an UPK program if that's a little important. So I just wanted to open it up for conversation. Uh, I know this is the information that was requested of us last time so that the board could weigh in and make a decision. And, uh, you can go for that.
I'll kick it off. Um, so just to be clear, we talked about this last time, but I think it is confusing to people when they look and they, if people really like to look at the state aid runs and all that, the allotment, the money that was offered to us by the state is, is sort of a, a false sense of security because that's not actually the, the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that we are eligible for is not two hundred thousand dollars. There's actually per child cost. And we can spend up to two hundred thousand dollars, but we are really only getting, what is it, forty-seven hundred?
Is it fifty-seven hundred students or fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
Okay, so I just turned it over. Regardless, it doesn't matter, we are getting, no matter how much money they said, they could say they're giving us a million dollars. They're not. They're giving us that fifty hun- fifty-four hundred dollars per student.
Per class.
Which is why we had suggested and we started this conversation two meetings ago and then last time, let's start with a pilot class, let's see how it goes, let's get some numbers on what it's going to cost this singular classroom between a teacher and aid programming, et cetera. So when the community sees that big number that the state's giving you two hundred thousand dollars, they're not. They're giving you up to that amount, but it's based on how many children are actually enrolled, which is why for a first-year pilot program, it is more sensible and reasonable to, to do a smaller class and, and see if it is a good fit for us and see if it works and see if something works successfully.
It, it is. And then the second piece that was critical is that this, this funding is not guaranteed perpetually. This was, it was offered last year, it was offered again this year. Uh, there is no promise that this will be continued beyond next year.
Is it fair to say not to get ahead of ourselves if we proceed with the UPK program? Uh, and it looks by February that this is going really well and the community really enjoys the program, wants it to continue, that we would, in anticipation for next year's budget, start assuming that we're not going to get the money and, and start budgeting some, some money to set aside, similar to what we're doing with the mental health position that is funded now, but we're starting to build up a little bank account for it so that when the money runs out, it's built into our budget and we can continue it?
By January, we are at the first initial state aid runs, so we will know by January.
So, okay, so we will know then, like, hey, this, this is going away, if you guys wanna do it, you're totally on your own or we'll get support again? Okay.
And then like the, the next aid runs came out April, just after April, and we found out we got more. So they come out in June, or January first and then, and April third and the ninth.
The state likes to under promise and then over deliver. Uh, but Gary says it all the time, that fiscal cliff is a real thing. So if you get used to those funds-
Right.
-and you're not planning for it in the future, all of a sudden, the faucet gets thinned off and then we're left holding the bag for a program that maybe at that point in our, that districts can't afford at that point. So we just always have to keep that eye towards the horizon to make sure that we're funding these things.
And additionally, we are awarded less money per child because of our overall economic status in other districts.
Correct. You, you can look that up and see what the per pupil allocation is. And it's very much associated with me financially.
Um, can we talk about transportation?
Sure.
So in the information that Joanna sent out, we're not required to transport pre-K students according to Education Law Section three, six, three, five. So what would that look like? And if we are to transport them, are there additional, for example, like buses or something that we would need to put in place?
Uh, potentially, it could be some additional cost. I think you're touching on something really critical though. If we're gonna offer a UPK program and it's designed to be done by lottery, so that you ensure equity, you can't screen out kids or create situations where parents could not afford to send their kids because maybe transportation is an issue. So we will have to budget for and provide transportation. A lot of these kids are a year younger than some of our, our Waterman students. Some of them are very little, some of them will need some additional support. Uh, and a lot of them will be just fine riding the Waterman bus in the morning. Uh, if it's a single bus run or, um, you know, just a few additional children on our Waterman bus runs in the morning, uh, this is a problem we're confidently can overcome.
They don't have to have harnesses, is that right?
I don't believe so, um, but I don't have to look at all of that.
What's that?
There's, you can't, there's a, there's a number of nuanced requirements that we're about to find out about.
And if a student just, I'm, I'm guessing that some families might wonder this, this is a lottery, this is totally optional. If you choose not to send your kid to UPK, no problem. They can, they can enroll in kindergarten as scheduled-
Correct.
-regular programming can resume and you can move on with your lovely Skinni Atlas life, you know, K through twelve and totally skip over the UPK. It is-
Correct.
-it is an optional additional supplemental program for families if they want to take advantage of it, if we get one of the lotteries.
And, and it will only serve fourteen divisions.
Right. And, but just in, in general, because people like to think, okay, well, if you're doing it, you're probably gonna do it next year. I don't think I ever want my kid to go to that. It's not a requirement, it's a-
No, no requirement. And we'll do an open and transparent process, we'll probably do a, a public drawing, live stream, videotape, the whole thing, just in, in the interest of transparency and keeping the processes open and honest as possible. So there will be communications coming out from the districts on, uh, criteria, on all of these things. We have a couple of different models that we've borrowed from different schools that we like, uh, we'll make it our own and we can begin, we can begin that shortly, if that is a little important.
So if the board agrees to move forward with the UPK program for the fall, I assume that communication would be fairly quick here with a submission interest requirement.
The submission deadline-
Very soon and then drawing shortly thereafter so that families can plan.
Correct. So try to use as long a runway as possible so families can plan.
So let me ask a question dearly. What is the cost of not drawing the program?
We would lose out on the opportunity to provide early literacy instruction for fourteen additional students.
Well, when we went down this path, we started a hundred and eighteen thousand, which bumped up when we got a final Steve Ron. But that's just a dollar figure side of it. The real question is what value does a UPK program build to the community? I mean, all of you guys remember, that's the path we went down.
Yeah.
Right? And, and we went back to the drawing board and we got a lot of input. And you guys have done an excellent job distilling it into what a version of the program looks like, so kudos for that. Um, but that's just hard dollars, right? The real question, because we're gonna, we're gonna be faced with the exact same question a year from now, if we assume that the funding runs off, you know, fades away and then we're gonna have to finance it out of the budget. So, so it boils back down to what is the ultimate cost? And that cost starts where you, it starts off with, you know, we have these guys who have, don't have the benefit. We have social emotional issues happening. Um, and then we know that all the, all the programs we currently have in place, from Waterman through State Street and we're looking to expand it, the expectation is that if we have earlier intervention, it could mitigate a lot of issues for the down. So there is a larger benefit to having the program or we stand to have an extreme, a bad situation if we don't proceed with the program.
I think part of it, and you're touching on something really important that we, uh, when we originally learned about this funding, our immediate thought was how to target- when we originally learned about this funding, our immediate thought was how to target the kids that we did most. And the criteria that are used to determine half, or the rules are strict. If you sign up for state funding, you have to play by the rules. The rules are strict. And for them, in the interest of equity, it has to be wide open. So we cannot target those kids. However, are we likely to catch several of them? Absolutely. Is there, you know, a hundred years of research about early literacy and early literacy? Absolutely. Can we track those kids as they move through our cohorts? To see what that looks like and that maybe will inform our decision, even talking to next year's kindergarten teachers, that now these kids got a fourteen year academic program at Skinnett Ellis, not just a thirteen year. You know, these conversations were pretty similar years and years ago. As kindergarten is still not compulsory. But it's become commonplace and the value of it is undeniable. So if we catch some of these kids a year earlier. Yeah, so what, my only hesitation is that we can't have all, you know, the dream of being all openness, wide open for a community. And that's a real benefit for a community. Academic, social, emotional, mental health, early literacy, early literacy. And then as far as the community goes, the service that that provides, so many people in our community are working families. A lot of people are already struggling to pay for daycare and preschool and things like that, that that burden will be off, off of that coming outside looking for them.
I think we just have to be clear in the selection processes. I would think appropriately, the family that has two students that are eligible for, and one gets selected, they're in a high
You know, we actually, in one of the, one of the school districts that we look to as a model that happened. And that parent elected to keep both of the children out and freed that spot back up.
I think we have to be very clear on what that expectation is. You know, ideally, both of them are in, but you know, the chances of that happening are quite a lot. It's just more clear with those families today, most of the children, that they may not have one of them.
Yeah. And if that can happen, it probably will.
And with those fourteen, so fourteen is our number, if we have, because it's run away, it is a child move, can we go back to the lottery and fill that slot or would the classroom go down to thirteen? How does that for the funding work?
I think it would, it would depend on when that occurred.
Okay.
I think if it were prior to the start of the year, that's one set of options. If it were mid-year, we would probably not fill that spot.
And is there any financial situation where if we were to reassess this next year before budget season and we're finding that we would like to continue it and maybe add another class, can we combine our own funding?
We, my question, can we do a blend?
With this funding so that we can begin to target some of those specific students we want to bring in, but also accept this funding?
Two questions. One is the rules for accepting the funding are really specific.
Could we accept the fund that has to be by lottery by?
Could we do those students by lottery, but then also as a district begin to build the program? So let's say next year we want to do fourteen students by lottery by these rules, but then we're going to budget in another fourteen, another class?
We would have to do some digging to find out if that's lawful. The other problem, the bigger problem, I would say, is that it's a struggle to find even that one additional class at Waterman. We don't have a ton of vacant space.
So longevity wise, right now, this year, we can handle this one pilot. We'll reassess it next year. If it is approved, we would continue to have the space to run one classroom, in theory.
In theory, unless we have an enormous kindergarten class come in and that would again create the space issues.
So then if there is a space issue, what would be the longevity in planning for this program?
I think you'd have to look at an actual project. Just, you know, off the top of my head, this building comes to light as far as converting, but you're talking about, you know, a major
The tiny toilets.
Tiny toilets are the least of my concerns. As Connor and I have done through the capital project work that we're doing right now, toilets are easy. There's a lot of other complications, but yes, little toilets will certainly be a part of it.
So, sorry, just a curriculum question, not being a teacher by trade. Do you develop your own pre-K curriculum? Do you buy like a kit and you make some adjustments? How does this work? Where are we coming up with this? Because we've never had a full pre-K start to finish.
There are abundant resources out there, some of which are already attached to our K-8 with the early literacy program. Some of the work that is being done at Waterman, State Street, with GTOs and foundations and all of those early literacy type of things are all, those resources exist more everywhere. So we have to purchase them, you know, the cost of purchasing those things, we'd have to hire teachers, training in our way of teaching children how to read. So that we have a vertically articulated program started at pre-K all the way through.
Is it fair to assume though, I'm probably not a super near, you day job, is pre-K though still, I mean, yes, it's great, they're getting early literacy skills, early math skills and
There's still a lot of
But also, these kids are four years old and they need to learn how to like not eat the Play-Doh and just interact with peers and have just normal four-year-old stuff. And so I am fully in support of pre-K and I'm not trying to make a kid a reader by the end of
All the fun and the joy.
Yes, of like just learning how to exist.
Yes.
You know, go to the bathroom with the door closed, like the basic life skills here.
I think there's something to say for a preschool teacher. They're not a first grade teacher or a third grade teacher. A pre-K teacher is a different breed. And they understand how to start off the year in September and create that community, classroom community and have them sort of learn how to be at school. So, and then incorporate a curriculum that includes language and literacy, math, science, and all of that other kind of stuff.
It would be efficient, a lot of it's having them transition these kids to kindergarten or with our kindergarten teachers so that we can build and develop skills so that they get the grabber and they'll start kindergarten next year.
I have another question though. I was curious of why, how do we come up with fourteen rather than fifteen or sixteen?
It's a space thing mostly. I think if you've been in a kindergarten classroom with fourteen or sixteen kids, that's the difference. There's also some of the concerns. Some of the concerns with being an open lottery is anybody could get one of those slots as some of those individuals may need additional services and support, depending on the disability status, whatever their needs are. So the idea to leave a little bit of wiggle in there is more than fourteen.
And there would be two staff?
So it would be a teacher, an aide at minimum. And depending on the needs of the individual children that want lottery, we go from there.
How many kids are in a typical kindergarten class here? I know it varies year to year of us.
I'd say around fourteen is probably the average. I taught high school English and I never taught less than thirty kids. Until I was around elementary education, I would say, oh, what's the big deal? It's a big deal.
Oh my god.
It's a really big deal.
So who would be, I guess, kind of in charge of the program? Would it fall under more of like Pat Brown, John Whipple? Like who would be tracking and really making sure that this program is what we want it to be?
I think it would be a collaborative effort. First, it would fall under, you know, the Waterman family. So obviously, those teachers and those aides that were involved in the program would be part of the Waterman family, which absolutely involves, you know, the principal. And depending on the children in the classroom, Jen could be very involved or not involved at all, depending on who's in there.
And then kind of, I guess, more of a nitty gritty question, but given that this is only a one-year pilot program, how would we look at finding a lead teacher and putting together that on that? Going in as a one year.
You know, we've hired a number of teachers during COVID, we've had very frank conversations with them to say this is a one-year position. There are several that I can think of off the top of my head that I sat right in my office and said, I need you to understand, this is a one-year dig. That there is no chance of extension. And then, as luck would have it, certain retirements happened and we were able to retain several of those wonderful people that took the in-laws.
Okay.
So if the board agreed to move forward with this pilot program, we would need to vote on that, correct? At UPK?
We, we, we're going to find out what the resolution language looks like for the other districts that have got it. And we'll come up with a communication plan and put it through the board and say
So we could, if the timing works out, we could potentially vote on this on May 17th?
Probably not by May, but
Or June, but we, okay.
Eric, what's our kindergarten class this year that has one of these students?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. So if we keep eighty-four potentially coming in next year, we'd have seven students that if they don't get it, just still rely on the local, little childhood program that's here.
Yeah, I think that's another thing for a pilot program is we're not closing any businesses or shuttering any doors, just giving fourteen kids for the entire community.
Would we need to write, do a waiver then to know a partner for a couple of kids for that?
So that's a possibility. However, some of the partnerships are basically like you have the service providers just come into your building and they run the whole thing. And from a curriculum standpoint, to us, it didn't make as much sense as it would need it. And then the second part is the difference between UPK and daycare and half-day, you know, children's day out kind of experiences that happen in communities. The rules differ for all of those things. Some of these are certified teachers, they have to be early childhood educators, they're full day programs. Some of them are, you know, a couple hours a day, it's more community side.
Does a June resolution, you feel, give us enough time to get the information out to parents and get the names for the lottery and put the program together and catch the interest wave to give us ready?
It's fast. It's really fast. I think we can put out information about the lottery sooner to say, hey, this is what we're trying to do. If you're interested, please put your name in, in anticipation of the board.
That would really help us as we look to vote on it.
See what the interest is.
Yeah, I mean, if we only get a few names, which I don't think would happen, but if we did, I think that would be valuable information for us to have.
Whatever, hypothetical.
Especially, you know, and if we have a list of sixty names, then I think that gives us that, the community interest and investment peaks to this rather than us just in sitting up here talking about it.
I can do very, very, yeah.
I like that.
I can do that hypothetically this week, I can do that.
Yeah. And it would be helpful to have, you know, what is the realistic interest in this program?
Connor, just real quick, high level. Taking out the money that we're getting back from the state on this, what's the district's contribution? Roughly. So I can find the other million.
We kind of put together a worst case scenario. Until we know those students, we don't know the worst case scenario.
Just give me another, is it fifty thousand, a hundred thousand?
At least seventy-five thousand.
Okay. Perfect. So roughly, give or take, outside of some variables.
Fourteen students, we get seventy-five thousand, six hundred. Would at least cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run that. With their, not new furniture, it's using old stuff, it's so then if we get a kid with high needs, that's another teacher. I mean, that rockets it up.
Correct. But roughly fifty percent will be covered by the state funds, fifty percent we've got to pick up as a district community.
At least. We're exploring how to leverage again our P and CRSSA funds, other grant levels. So we can sort of mitigate that district's, that local share piece. It's going to just take some time to do. Connor's already looking at that.
But to Gary's point, you said earlier, if that requires another teacher, what's the cost savings of working with that student a year earlier? How's that save long-term?
You'd say for every reading teacher, we have to hire later on?
Depends. Depends on the student, depends on the disability, yeah.
It is, yeah.
We try to just provide as close a estimate in a realistic scenario as the board would expect. And then if there are, you know, wild card scenarios, then we will put that in the action to talk about. So I can put out a feeler this week to gauge interest, maybe with a tight deadline. And then we'll have our actual application process down and ready to go. And then after the June meeting, we can decide what we need to do.
What are the requirements as far as like gym class or art you have to?
There's a lot of that that can happen in the classroom. There's a lot of that we still have to look into.
Right. I guess my question is, can we provide it? But I guess my thing is, look, the positive far outweighs the negative, but we got to keep the high before. And play has to be put into the day and, you know, I mean, anxiety is high enough. We don't want these kids, you know, stressed out over
It's, you know, letter recognition, all those fun games you play with your kids.
But it's not easy. I've witnessed it. It's not easy. And like I said, I'm in full support in the, you know, the long term that will outweigh, but, you know, they're four, they got a lot to learn before they even, we start on the letters.
According to the plan that they came up with, the teacher and the teacher assistant would implement the special. So I think it's a little bit of flexibility there.
So one more question, Connor or Eric or both. Take UPK off the table and pretend we've never even heard of it, we weren't getting any money. We just said as a board, we have seventy-five thousand dollars extra. What do you want to do with it? Would you say, let's implement UPK or would you say, let's start teaching Mandarin? Or whatever. I just say, if UPK was not an issue, and forget about the state money, because really we are, if we agree to this, we're agreeing to, here's an extra seventy-five thousand that we're going to pull out of some bucket to give you to play with. So if UPK wasn't an option, what would you do with that seventy-five? And if the answer is, this, I'm not trying to be like loaded question, if the answer is, we don't have a dying need for that. Sure, we can spend it, everybody can spend it. But if there's not like a burning hole somewhere else, I just want to make sure there's not a fire somewhere else that needs that seventy-five.
Well, I mean, I could think of a number of things that we could focus that those dollars on. You know, the social, emotional, mental health supports in schools, additional support in middle school, the high school, additional math support, additional reading support. I mean, there's a lot of things that we could hypothetically spend those dollars on. Are they, are they a burning need to the point where I brought that to the board? At this point, especially at this point in budget season though. The UPK issue is if we're going to do a district wire, it's going to require space that we don't necessarily have right now. I know the district went through a facility study years ago where there was talk of closing buildings and all the such stuff. I don't know what the numbers were at that time, but right now I can say with confidence that it was a challenge to find a classroom.
Let me, that was our look at it here because we got to be able to look at things from both sides of the coin, right? We do not have seventy-five thousand dollars actually in our, fact. And tell me otherwise, Connor or Eric, we do not. We have, in order to contemplate the UPK program, we are tapping into so many contingencies that we have elsewhere. This is contingency funding.
Right.
So we run the risk that should any of the other buckets from which we are pulling to fund the UPK, this go around, at least the supplementing, the seventy-five key. We have to declare, I, that we run the risk that if we, you know, run those contingencies down, we'll have to, you know, pay for it later on, we'll have to do something later on. We do not have seventy-five thousand just being around.
Right.
Right? So we have to do that. And when you say the worst case scenario, is it truly the most expensive worst case scenario? Is it truly the worst case scenario?
It is, in a normal scenario, this was a safe number. However, like I said, depending on the needs of the individual children that arrive, it could be astronomical more.
Worst case scenario is, and not
Worst-case scenario is, and, and not worst-case from the center of the children, I believe you do children, but worst-case scenario is you have fourteen children who all of them have special needs.
And then you're talking about a multiple additional staff.
But that could happen in kindergarten too, so we can't, I don't mean to dismiss that, but that could happen with this incoming kindergarten class, we don't say, but isn't we well-funded, because it could get really expensive. So we can't anticipate how the students are going to come to us.
It's public school, I'm really sure about that.
And that's, it's not an important factor, but it could happen at any year in any building.
Absolutely, but we have to be cognizant and be public about it, the fact that we have that consideration, that we, that we are discussing the risk associated with it. Because when it happens and we, we run a deficit, it's gonna be a problem and it shouldn't be a surprise, you know, the narrative should be, listen, we consciously made this decision because we want to, we know the bad. And as such, one possible outcome is that, you know, we have taken money out of some contingency funds that we now need. Okay, so this is full disclosure, this is, this is what's ahead of us, our decisions are based on knowing all the good, but also what the downsides are. All right, so that's why I think it's important to get it out there.
So is, is the interest the last piece of the puzzle that the board needs?
And for me, I, I think that's a huge piece of the puzzle, because we can sit up here and discuss it, but now we've thrown it out there, the community has a month to weigh in, ask questions, respond to the survey, we see how many names we have, and that can really tell us, are we speaking for the community when we allocate that seventy-five thousand?
And, and in a way, you can understand why we, we're not going immediately to ask is there interest, because I'm not sure that the board is completely understood if we, is this something we want to do until we report it.
And, and I can say the board has not yet decided, but it's hypothetical, and gauge the interest. And I'll bring that data back to you and then we'll see how it goes.
And just make sure, I'm sure you knew this, but it's targeted not just at the school community, because there's a lot of people that are not in our school community, that are in our greater community, and they just haven't got to us yet, so it's gonna take some work on the communication piece to, to get to those people where, if their oldest child is four, they're probably not on Parents' Way. That's a great one. I mean, it's no, no offense to everyone on Parents' Way, you're not the people we're trying to talk to, we're trying to talk to the people that haven't gotten here yet.
Either our mail list would be accurate.
Yeah, no.
I think you'd have to look out, look out to the local village child programs that are offering here, let them know that we're doing an interest survey, because they might have that contact as well. What are those communities in those families?
And I'm sure we're, we're driving fast right now, but they might be willing to reach out to us.
We'll get to work on that.
Thank you. So Carrie's question about the needs, what are we, what are you doing? Reminds me of my kindergarten finance system, it's a side note, I hope you, you people tolerate this. We had to take the axe, I remember about that time, that's a trip, and I never, ever slept.
See, I remember a kindergarten in this building right here, both buses were here, my classroom was over there, I was taking nap, playing the kitchen riding, try still was half-day, I don't remember learning a darn thing, and I was, you know, that's what it was.
That's what you learned through place.
Exactly, right.
That's social sense.
And we all learned great, you know? I heard great.
Eric? That is all for you.
I have one more question for you, not related to UPK, just a quick update. Has the BIMAS testing been completed at all?
Yes, all, all of the BIMAS testing that this completed, district-wide.
And when will the next time?
Explain what BIMAS.
So the BIMAS is the, it's basically a, a universal screener for children with acute mental health concerns, questions that include everything from how you feel to indications of self-harm. We've had some remarkable discoveries district-wide, where we were able to intervene in some pretty acute circumstances on behalf of kids. And like I said to the staff when we rolled this out, if it was a complete waste of time for everybody involved, and we helped one child, it's worth it, and we're gonna do it again. And we've helped far more than one child.
And so what is the next interval? Will this get done in the fall? Are, are we done with the testing for this year?
For this year, it was a, it was a single iteration, for next year, there will be multiple checkpoints throughout the year. I think some of the anxiety and the unknowns from the teachers have not come through, it's also very different, it's very different K five and six twelve. Six twelve, the students are given the survey, they do it themselves, whereas K five, a lot of it relies on the teachers' observations of the kids, it's quite a bit more time-consuming, but no less important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our backroom is.
All right, if we're then ready to continue on, we'll turn the floor over to Rebecca for the school president's manager report.
Thanks, Tom, just a couple of quick things, just to let everybody know, in homes last week, well, this week, the budget newsletter will be, shareholder report will be in homes, posted to our website, it's got very information about the budget, what's going on in our schools, initiatives that we're taking on, proposition information, construction updates, but just look out for that, if you do not get it, there's a mailing mishap that is on the website, and has been blasted out as well. So definitely some great information there, so please just check that out. And then as of yesterday, our ballot information came in for absentee materials, so like I did last year, just wanted to go over if you are going to have an absentee ballot, what that process looks like, all that information is on our website, and you can contact Rebecca York to get that information. So what will happen, you will fill out the information, upon approval of that, a letter will come to you, it's kind of shaped like this, with your address in that, will be multiple additional envelopes, in that you will find the actual ballot, the envelope that the ballot goes in, and then finally, the envelope that the envelope where the ballot in goes in. So once you fill out your ballot, on the front, you'll have the three propositions, remember if somebody's turned it over, is the board candidates on the back, once all that information is filled out, you will fold it up and put it in the envelope that looks like this. Once it's sealed, you'll have to sign on the bottom, and then also across the seal as well. Once that is sealed, you'll put it in the additional envelope, and then send that back to Rebecca, it will be put in a lockbox where we count them after the polls close at nine o'clock on the seventeenth. Any questions on absentee ballot or ballot information?
So, so I know the procedure is written, but how do people request an absentee ballot? What's the deadline to request an absentee, absentee ballot, and by when do absentee ballots have to be returned in order to be counted in the election?
So all of that information will be in the shareholder report, so it says how eligible people to vote, all that is posted as well on the Board of Education website, under the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget information, it's got dates, deadlines, and how to access the information.
So check scan schools dot org for further information.
Yep, or just reach out and we can obviously take care of it, so.
Sounds good. Is there gonna be a Dropbox again here this year, or is it going back to the, is that we offer the Dropbox?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, we just got in yesterday, so she shot a bunch out yesterday and today, so we'll have that here, so.
And then Connor, just one more time, can you reiterate the process of the board seats? Because there's two three-year terms, two-year term and a one-year term, and how people will be selected for those seats?
Yes, so we have five candidates for, five candidates for actual seats, so we have two expiring terms, which are three-year terms, one two-and-a-half-year term held by, I believe it's Gary, or Rebecca right now, because she took over for Michael Cowell, and then a year-and-a-half term for, the seat that Gary Campbell is holding right now, and that goes in the order of the amount of votes that you receive. So if you receive the most amount of votes, you get the longest term, and so I'm down the list. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of people asked, and I just explained it as, vote for who you're voting for, and then it'll be based on vote count, what seat, you don't pick what seat you are putting someone in, you just vote, and based on vote tally.
You're not running for a specific.
You're not running for a specific.
Seat that you're running for.
Vote to eligible dictate where the candidates.
Some districts do it that way, we're an avatar toward a district, so if you run for the board, I guess.
And these are, these are rules dictated by NISBA and Department of, and all of the subjects.
And we're working on FAQ to answer, because there are a lot of nuances of people going out, coming in, incumbents running, so there will be a FAQ that we're working on, posted, and blasted out as well.
And this is kind of procedural, but I'll bring it up now just because it ties in, so May seventeenth, we will have a board meeting, we'll probably take a recess if we end early, and then we will reconvene after the vote count is done, and Rebecca will phone it into us with the vote count is, and we will be back on a live stream meeting and announce the vote count.
So according, it's important to say that board members are not involved in the details of the election, the board on that night will probably meet in the library.
Library, we don't set foot in the library.
Yeah, we, they keep a.
So we'll go to the library. We also talked last year about doing it later, so that there wasn't.
That's what we did.
So there wasn't hours and hours of sitting around. So this year, we started at eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The year before, we did the vote, we're actually.
Yeah.
So.
But on the night of the election, the board will certify the vote, and we will know if the budget passed and the other propositions passed.
That timeline is that we close the polls at nine, we take the absentee ballots, count the absentee ballots, and add those into the total, and then have all the certifications ready to put those numbers on, notarize them and bring them to the Board of Education for approval.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
Did you work with the absentee nineteen for the nesting envelopes?
Yes.
I need to hear the outskirts.
And Connor, I think we're two early in the month for financial.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So we will now continue on, unless there are any further questions for Connor, we'll now continue on with new business. First item of new business is, the motion requested, item five-eight, this is to rescind the retirement of Karen DeBorca, and it is to accept the resignation of Anthony Pugnati, who is in a nice position outside of school district.
So moved.
Sir? So it's been moved, moved by Amanda, seconded by Dan.
Yeah.
Dan, by Dan, Dan, you can have that.
Okay.
So is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, then all in favor of that rescinding of the retirement and self-consolidation reservation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion does carry.
Just congratulations and welcome back to Karen, and we're happy she stayed, and best of luck to Anthony Pugnati as he moves on with his career in school administration.
Excellent, thank you. So five-B is the, a motion from a board member for the probationary appointment of Greg Santora to the administrative tenure area of Director of Personnel and Operations, this will be effective July first and run through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five.
There's also the Patrick.
Patrick McLean going on job rate.
Groundskeeper.
Okay, that one didn't get highlighted, so sorry.
Oh, oh.
Sorry, yeah. So and as was pointed out just now, this is also the general appointment of Patrick McLean, groundskeeper, and that is effective on the seventh of June.
So moved.
It's been moved by Amanda, seconded by Rebecca. Discussion on the motion? And all in favor of affecting those appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so my count on that is five aye and two nay. So the motion carries. Next is item C, which are substitute appointments, these include Michael Cole as a long-term substitute teacher, effective from the thirteenth of May until the twenty-fourth of June this year, and also Amy Diesler as a long-term substitute teacher, effective from the second of May until the twentieth of May this year.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Amanda, seconded by Danielle. Any discussion on that motion? And then all in favor of affecting those substitute appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion does carry. Uh, naturally, we have before us tenure recommendation, and this is for Dave Prichet, a school psychologist. Are we making that motion?
Sounds okay.
Right, it's been moved by me, and I'll take that as a second by Amanda. Any discussion on that motion?
I just want to say there is a really nice tenure recommendation letter that's in our board bracket that just kind of talks about why he is deserving of tenure and kind of the good work that he does at the school and does with our students, and so I just kind of want to acknowledge that.
Kristi, we're a really nice letter. David is just an amazing guy at our second mental health community forum, the other night, as we had three students attend, all three of them talked a lot about just how easy it was to talk to people like David specifically, he was brought up, all work and all, and so this is exactly the type of person that this district, we want to wrap our arms around, keep here with us forever, so congratulations, David.
So any further discussion on the motion? Then all in favor of ranking David Prichet tenure as school psychologist, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion does carry. Next before us would be a request from a board member for a motion for the acceptance of the elementary PTC scholarship, be it the Southwood Board of Education improves the elementary PTC scholarship and the amount of five hundred dollars to be awarded to a graduated senior, yet to be determined.
So moved.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Danielle. Any discussion on the motion?
Connor or Eric, does the, the PTC determines who gets the scholarship?
They don't, no, the guy in his office gets a application out to students, they apply for it, and internally they do it.
Oh, okay.
And that was decided and agreed on.
Okay.
This is a ongoing fifteen hundred dollar one they do every year, so this was, it's been ongoing for a while.
Awesome. Thanks, elementary PTC, that's awesome.
So a motion is on the floor, any further discussion? And then all in favor of accepting the elementary PTC scholarship, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do, we accept that with gratitude, as Danielle expressed. Finally before us under new business is item F, and this is our acceptance of the Committee on Special Ed, Committee on Preschool Special Ed, and section five-oh-four reports, concluded tonight is one CPSC report, and it looks like, I'm sorry, two CPSC reports and nine special ed reports.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Amanda, seconded by Danielle. Any questions, any discussion on the reports for tonight? And then all in favor of accepting the reports, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion carries, and we are now at closing hours, item A is processed review. Just in summary, if there was anything additional to discuss on universal PK, I would be glad to hold my group for that up.
I was hoping to, from, if I jump ahead here. Oh, I'm sorry, isn't.
You're doing better than I, so go ahead.
Just trying to get final head count for the CNY School Awards Dinner, and then also the COSBA Awards banquet that involves our administrators, our teachers, and our students. So the CNY SBA annual dinner is, is May twenty-fifth, that's the one here, at the Lodge, and then the, the other one is at the Aurora in the twenty. And then the other one is at the Aurora Inn on the twenty-sixth. So who's excited for the twenty-fifth to let me know who's going? I heard from Tom already, you know?
Yes, how are you doing the twenty-fifth as well?
I can do the twenty-first.
Amanda, you do?
Similarly.
All right. Very easily, yes.
I, I, well, don't put me in the headcount. I'm just going to show up and sneak in and out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably, I just don't want to commit to anything because we could have sexual themes though. That's the case, but I will, if there's no commitment, don't sign me up.
All right, fair, just got it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And the second one is the Aurora Inn event as the fall night, May twenty-sixth. Anybody can leave that one of us.
I'm going to do my best, well.
You're going with that?
Well, I'll get up, yeah.
Is that yes, Carrie?
Uh, well, yes or no?
Carrie, maybe, but I do not do that all the way. I know she said it's probably better that I can't, I can't, so I cannot do this. Any other takers?
I get track sectionals. You know, that's going to be like eighteen hours long, so I'll be busy for the whole weekend. Starting up in safety, yeah.
Okay. Carrie, maybe this. That was also well-intended. We have, high schools have students and their parents.
We have students at that, huh?
We do, we do.
In the Aurora Inn.
Yeah, assume that Carrie or I will go one weekend. Mark us for one.
Yeah, we do. Again, I don't care about eighty-two, so if I just go, show up. Are we able to, do we know who the student is or are we not?
Grace Peters. Thank you.
Now we'll move on. Just the last item here is agenda planning for the May seventeenth meeting. The post date is on Tuesday, May ninth, at either eight in the morning or four in the afternoon. So any takers to upset the agenda?
I could do like a seven thirty, seven forty-five in the morning or like a four fifteen. I could do either, since I prefer the morning.
So Amanda, yes, Danielle, yes. Do we have a third member who's willing to upset the agenda? Okay, so we'll pass through the time. Any third members like to?
Who are going in the morning?
Seven thirty?
Okay.
Carrie?
All right, just announcements, upcoming meetings. The budget vote and the board event election, May seventeenth. We did have five speakers tonight and we've been, speakers who attended tonight. And the Royal National once again. And then regular board meeting, and then the June seventh. This now brings us to the second opportunity.
Can I just say one more thing on announcements? It's not actually a school board thing, but Mrs. Carroll is sitting in the middle. SEF is having a big, far extravagant sale. She would love your donations. And she will accept those, if you remember the internet hire, this weekend. And then they will be on sale the following weekend, and it raises money for SEF, which, as you know, SEF funds a lot of the great things that our teachers get to do, whether it's programs or extra learning opportunities or kind of live action field trips with the stuff they teach in their classrooms. So send out your garage, bring Heather your junk, but not really bad junk. And then show up the following weekend and buy it back for ten times its street value.
Quite a way, Heather would put it right.
No, she would like you to buy it back for more than it's worth.
Thanks, you applaud.
So if there's no further business, we go forward. This does bring us to the second opportunity for couple of comments. I won't go through the parameters of the comments again, but if anyone would like to speak to the board and have a great time.
Do you want to just type this?
Good, so up to my turn to say your name.
Kristy Krieger and I live in Skeneles. I just have a quick question. I'm really confused. Last board meeting, you discussed or brought Mr. Pugh, brought up the new Director of Personnel and Facilities. And congratulations, Mr. Santoro on that position. This meeting, you voted it in, but in either meeting, I heard, I didn't hear anyone ask about the salary of that position. So is that salary, do you all know that salary? Is it posted someplace or are you aware of that, of what you voted on and what the salary will be? And just the public does not know that?
So I'm not, I can't answer questions right now for our policy, but I can refer to Mr. Pugh for a couple of.
All those documents are presented to the board in case of any employee retire and it becomes public following that. So there's all the documents.
Okay, so, okay, so the public should see that then?
Yeah, it'll be moved into public debt tomorrow on Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just curious because I didn't hear anybody ask about it the past week, so I will be sure. Thank you.
Any additional members of the public who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Heather Carroll, twelve seventy Hurley Sea Road. I just had a couple little comments about the pre-K discussion. I understand that we're feeling out a little of the board tonight. And I just want to make sure that we're having sensitivity. I know you've already probably thought of this, but some sensitivity to our community partners at Skeneles Nursery School and Holy Trinity Preschool and Montessori and even the daycare center. Because early literacy can be achieved with our friends at these preschools as well if we share our resources with them and collaborate with them. I just want to make sure that they're going to have a heads up. They can probably be of great help to you as you're reaching out to feel out numbers for the fours program. I'm assuming it will all be fours in full day. But that we can't really call it Universal 3K because that would be for everybody. You're going to have to call it limited pre-K or just pre-K. So I would just encourage you to call in the directors of those partners in the community and just, you know, ask them to help you reach out to that population of students. But also just to make sure that they are preparing because if we poach fourteen kids from them, it could potentially cause one of them to fold altogether. You know, if they've been hanging on by a thread for their enrollment numbers and then we take fourteen of potential paying students for their programs and then we last year, but we don't continue the year after that, and then one of our preschools has had to close, that, that, you know, that could, we just have to really make sure that we're having a conversation with them. And I think it's so that they can plan accordingly.
Awesome.
Also, because I used to be involved with the PTC, I think it's a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship because each of the three PTCs does five hundred each. And when I was president, it was the presidents that deliberated on that. It was a blind process. But it was still the presidents that chose the recipient, in answer to your question. And I believe that's still the case.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you. Are there additional members who would like to speak tonight? I do thank you once again for attending and the ordinance to participate in the school board process. Let's now move to a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Danielle, seconded by Amanda. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned at eight fifty-nine. Thank you all. Thanks for coming.